Well, good evening. I now call this meeting to order. York County School Board Regular Meeting, and it's hard to believe that this is the last week of October already. And we continue moving forward in our school year, and we appreciate the positive feedback that we've received from many of our families. And we'd like to thank everyone for working together and helping us with that and being very flexible with us. We'll continue to make necessary adjustments as we persevere to maintain and focus on providing our excellent and safe instruction to our students. And I'll mention that in addition to our YCSD TV channels, our meeting is also being livestreamed on YouTube, on the YouTube channel this evening as well. So I'd like to now read your YCSD mission statement. And it's the mission of the York County School Division to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. Well, one other thing I'd like to mention before we start the meeting as well is, one year ago today, our TAB community suffered a tragic loss of three young lives that were lost too soon. And one quote that I remember that I'd like to read is, "The most painful goodbyes are the ones that are never said and never explained." So just let us take a moment of silence for those that were lost in this tragedy. So next, I'd like to share some information regarding our pledge leader for this evening. And our pledge leader is Alana Parker. So she's currently a 4th grade student at TAB Elementary School, Mrs. Knopf's class, and she's the daughter of Leslie and Alonso Parker, and a proud big sister to Alonso. So Alana has been a TAB Tiger since kindergarten and has been a model student throughout her time at TAB Elementary School. Not only is Alana taking the virtual world head-on, she is also an outstanding student in all academic areas. In addition to excelling academically, she is kind, she is compassionate, and humble in all of her interactions with her peers and with adults. Alana loves school and enjoys science the most, especially when experiments are involved. She is part of the TAB Elementary Folk Dance Club, the News Crew, and has aspirations of joining the chorus when it starts back up. Outside of school, she enjoys gymnastics, singing, dancing, and art. She is involved with church and thoroughly enjoys having opportunities to help her dad with the church announcements. When asked to share a special interest about herself, she excitingly shared black history. She has loved past projects that have incorporated black history and enjoys learning about those who have made a difference for others. When she gets older, Alana wants to go to college, play basketball, sing, and learn more about black history so she can be an activist within her community. At TAB, we commend Alana on her efforts each day and look forward to continuing to see her grow into a fantastic member of her community moving forward. We thank Alana and the entire Parker family for embodying our motto at TAB Elementary School, "Together, Everyone Succeeds." So please join me in thanking Alana Parker for leading us in the pledge allegiance, and please stand.
Hi there. My name's Alana Parker, and I'm a 4th grade Tiger Cub from TAB Elementary School. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alana. That was a great job, and we appreciate you being our pledge leader this evening. So next, we're going to move into our recognition and awards. And we're going to start with our Seniors of the Month, which we, all the board members had an opportunity to take this afternoon, to present those to them in person at their homes. So we're going to start with the Senior of the Month of Bruton High School, and Mr. Shaffer, you have that.
The Student of the Month, the Senior of the Month at Bruton High School is Jacob Lor. Letha Dockery is the principal there, and Jacob's parents are John and Anastasia Lor. Bruton High School is proud to honor Jacob Lor as our October Senior of the Month. Jacob is an outstanding and compassionate student leader who is always willing to help others. He is known as a great listener, as he is often the voice of reason that his peers seek when they are in need of support. When Jacob is confronted with a challenging situation, he always looks for the positive aspects of each situation. This has served him well as a student leader and captain of the Bruton cross-country indoor and outdoor track teams. He was also named to the 2019 II-A All-State Cross-Country Team. Jacob dedicates himself to his academics and has earned the highest honors award each year. Jacob is very active in our community. He has served as a camp counselor, a docent, and game instructor for the Jamestown York Foundation, and has served as a leader, speaker, and member of a community youth group project Lead Four Twelve. He is most proud of his volunteer work at the Five Cardinals Farm. Jacob appreciates the opportunity to learn about the passion and diligence of farming and how this works, how this work connects to and is appreciated by our community. Jacob is interested in attending college to major in environmental science. I've known Jacob for a number of years, and he is definitely an exemplary young man and is definitely mature beyond his years. We are proud to recognize Jacob Lor as a Bruton High's Senior of the Month.
Good job. Our next Senior of the Month is from Grafton High School, Mr. Higginbotham.
Yes, it's my pleasure to tell you about Kylie Sandberg. Her parents are Mark and Nanette Sandberg, and it is with great pleasure that we honor Kylie Sandberg as Grafton's October Senior of the Month. She is a bright and enthusiastic student who is dedicated to pursuing and achieving her goals. Kylie has maintained consistency in her academics throughout high school. She has challenged her abilities and has taken honors in advanced placement courses. Kylie's hard work and dedication is recognized by her achievement of the highest honor awards for her accomplishments. Her teachers state that she is a respectful student who is determined to do well, no matter the task. She works well with others and is willing to help in any way she can, both in and out of the classroom. In pursuit of furthering her education, Kylie hopes to excel at the college level in academics and activities. In addition to her academics, Kylie also participates in extracurricular activities. She is a member of the National Honor Society, English Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, where she participates diligently in various community service projects. Kylie is also a member of the Grafton Varsity Cheerleader Team, Special Olympics Club, and Relay for Life Club. Kylie states she enjoys participating in her extracurricular activities and feels that doing so has increased her leadership skills, communication, and work ethic. She is very proud of her accomplishments, however, her proudest moment is when she started the Relay for Life Club at Grafton High School. The global pandemic caused the fundraiser to be canceled, however, Kylie independently started a cookie fundraiser where she baked and raised over 6,000 for the Grafton Relay for Life Club. And today, she told us that she was getting up at 5:00 AM to cook or to bake those cookies for that fundraiser all throughout the closure at the end of last school year. Kylie is a dedicated and determined student who, without a doubt, will make a positive impact in the world with her future career goals and the path that she chooses. Kylie is a role model for all Clippers. She has a kind heart that looks to help others and better her community. We are so proud to recognize Kylie as Grafton's Senior of the Month. Congratulations, Kylie.
And our next Senior of the Month is from TAB High School, Mr. Myatt.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to introduce TAB High School Senior of the Month for October, Noah Simsek. I'd also like to congratulate his parents, Jared and Audra Simsek. And we, again, had an opportunity to visit with the family this morning, and we had a good time. Noah is a dedicated student who takes initiative in his academics. He's a leader in and out of school and is willing to push himself past his comfort zone to reach his greatest potential. He has evolved in many activities at TAB, including various clubs, honor societies, and band while also managing a very rigorous course load. Noah's GPA is a 4.67, and he will complete 13 advanced placement courses and six honor classes upon graduating. Noah has received many academic awards, including AP Scholar with Distinction his junior year, highest honors since his freshman year, and he was recently selected as a national merit semifinalist. Noah is a member of the Tri-M Honor Society and Mu Alpha Theta, Mu Alpha Theta, where he competed and competed in numerous Virginia Math League competitions and is consistently one of the highest-scoring TAB High School students. Noah is an active member of the TAB High School Marching Band. He was a recently selected brass captain of the marching band. He was a section leader in 9th and 10th grade, and this year, as brass captain, he will be in charge of 50 to 60 band members. He was selected to the all-district band in either concert or symphonic band. Since his freshman year, he plans to continue banding college. Additionally, Noah has participated in many clubs, including the Model United Nations since 9th grade, where he helped lead his team to an outstanding delegation award at ODU during his sophomore year. Noah consistently competed at a high level in the Scholastic Bowl and was selected as team captain his senior year. He has also co-founded the Trivia Club with the goal of providing students an opportunity to connect and meet over common interests during virtual school. Noah is reliable, a great teammate, a leader, and has strong work ethic. It is our pleasure to honor Noah Simsek as the TAB High School Student of the Month. And again, Noah, thank you for your leadership and personal example, and congratulations again.
Good job. And our last Senior of the Month comes from York High School, Ms. Girls.
Yes, I am honored to present Nathaniel Michael Valerio as the York High School Senior of the Month, and congratulations to his parents, Hernani and Wilma Valerio. York High School is pleased to announce Nathaniel Michael Valerio as the October Senior of the Month. Nathaniel is an amazing young man and a proud Falcon. Nathaniel has excelled throughout his time at York High School and attends the Governor's School for Science and Technology. Due to his academic success, he holds membership in Mu Alpha Theta, the Science National Honor Society, and the Spanish National Honor Society. Nathaniel enjoys being involved in school and the surrounding community. He has held several leadership positions in the Philippines-American community of the Peninsula as the youth vice president, youth president, and youth secretary. Nathaniel is also an active member on the Student Advisory Board at the Governor's School for Science and Technology. He has completed volunteer hours as a junior volunteer at Riverside Hospital and serves as a peer mentor for the confirmation team at his church. In 2018, Nathaniel participated in the York County School Division's science fair and placed 3rd in biochemistry. For the past three years, Nathaniel has competed on the York High School Boys Tennis Team. His hard work and determination have made him an important member of this team. Nathaniel, you are one of a kind, and we're happy to have you as part of the Falcon family. Congratulations on being selected as the October Senior of the Month.
Great job to all our Seniors of the Month. So our next presentation is Virginia School Boards Association Academy Awards. So Dr. Shandor, I'll ask you to share.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, and training, and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of awards based on the points earned from July 1 through July, excuse me, July 1 through June 30. So tonight, we have two awards to be presented, the Award of Achievement and the Bronze Pin. It's going to go to Mr. Richardson. We can give him a round of applause. And I'm sorry this is going to sound cheesy, but the other Award of Achievement and Bronze Pin goes to Dr. Shandor. If you can give him a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Dr. Shandor.
Do you want to add a few comments?
Yeah, I was just going to say that these awards are from the VSBA, and, you know, when I first got on the board, the other board members were seasoned and experienced, and they were all getting the awards, and I wasn't because you have to build up and earn these points as you come along. So don't feel bad that you didn't get one this year because I didn't get one for two years. And I'm just now starting to get the awards just for attending the conferences and the webinars and that sort of thing that they offer throughout the year. So that just helps us continue to stay on top of things and be on our toes. But thank you for all that.
All right, next, we have our business meeting we're going to move into. And for unfinished business, we have none, and presentations, we have none. So we're going to move right on to our comments from citizens. And for public participation at board meetings, I'll call up anyone who's signed up to speak, and we have three speakers who have signed up this evening. The school board provides public comment period for the public to comment on topics that are germane to the business of the school board, and the school board expects each speaker to be courteous, modeling for our students on how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire board and not to one individual board member nor the superintendent or staff member or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and each speaker may speak for up to three minutes, and a timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and they should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your full name and address. And relating to safety measures, we are practicing social distancing this evening and have implemented several changes relating to our citizen comments, including we are providing individual sign-up sheets and pens for each speaker. We're cleaning the podium after each speaker, so there'll be a brief pause in between. And we ask that you speak loudly and there's a safety shield which may muffle your voice when you speak, but there is a safety shield up there, so if you need to remove your mask to speak, that will be appropriate for the time that you're speaking. And we're going to start with our first speaker. It's Roxanne O'Regan.
Hello, I'm Roxanna O'Regan. I live at 115 Cope's Way, York County. I teach at TAB High School, and I'm here tonight to ask the board to reconsider and slow down the decision and process in further opening York County public schools until after the new year. There is no one who wants to be back in the classroom with students more than I do. But in our haste to return to normal, we may only be compounding the problem. I understand as leaders, you are trying to accommodate students, teachers, parents, the state, the federal government, and the list goes on. But many teachers in the county feel they have fallen at the bottom of this list. Parents were given a choice if they wanted their children to return to school or to remain in the virtual setting. However, teachers were not afforded the same courtesy. I have seen no survey to poll teachers concerning their opinions, suggestions, or comfort level with the plan to reopen. Teachers, too, are the people in which you represent, and as leaders, you need to hear everyone's voice. The CDC reports there have been over 7,000 new cases in Virginia in the last seven days. Friday, the U.S. broke its daily record with over 84,000 new cases reported. NPR color codes each state on its daily case sites that range from green to red. Virginia finds itself one step below red, in orange indicating escalating spread. You have loyal, professional teachers who now need you to support them as much as you do every other group that needs your attention. Many teachers are worried and fearful about teaching in person for their own personal health, the health of a loved one at home, having young children at home, or pregnancy. There are just too many unknowns about this disease. The truth is, the most vulnerable to this disease are not the students. It's the teachers, the janitors, and the administrative staff. We know that children over the age of 12 spread the disease at the same rate as adults. By waiting until January, we allow more time for this disease to settle down, or not settle down. And if we find that if it is progressing, then we have not unnecessarily compromised staff or students or caused more upheaval and disruption by forcing everyone to constantly readjust. Yes, teachers serve their community, but please remember, we have families, we have concerns, and we have limits. We all want to get back into the classroom, but not hastily and certainly not by taking a chance with people's health or lives. Teachers understand the importance of data, and the data clearly indicates that as a state, we are not out of the woods yet. Thank you.
Thank you much for your comments. All right, our next speaker is Robert Ross.
Good evening, Chairman Richardson, members of the board. My name is Robert Ross. I live at 1611 First Colony Trace. The district took on the task months ago of safety with great urgency. In order to create a safe environment, Dr. Shandor even created a video on October 1st explaining the safety measures, and I fully commend the district on this effort. And I'm fully, fully have confidence in those safety measures being implemented at our schools. I commend the district on this effort. I also commend those parents of high school students who have opted for full remote, and I commend the district on giving that opportunity for our students. But now, on behalf of my daughters, the time has come for us to move to full in-person learning. According to the Return to School page, the division will make decisions on the level of in-person instruction based on the status of two main metrics. The first is the level of community transmission, and the second is the ability to deliver in-person instruction with operational integrity. This leads me to a few questions. Are the current safety measures put in place not enough to move forward in spite of this virus? According to your reopening metrics, all five strategies have been implemented correctly and consistently. So what is stopping us from moving forward in spite of this virus? Are the administrative and operational staffing levels required to deliver in-person instruction not adequate? The district's operational integrity dashboard indicated 90% of operational and support staff personnel can come to work in person. Is this the metric that is stopping us from returning to full in-person learning? Are the staffing levels, the teaching staffing levels, not adequate? The district integrity dashboard, which had not changed in over 30 days, by the way, indicated, as of yesterday, 81% of high school teachers can come in person to work with no accommodations. Yet, this morning, that changed to 70%. Is the district limited by the state? From what I've read, there are only guidelines and recommendations, which I honestly believe that you guys follow wholeheartedly, and that is good. However, there is no state law or executive order. Then private schools would be subject to those, and they would be closed, but I don't see that. They are open full-time and in-person. My final and most important question is on behalf of my daughters. Does the district intend to have full-time in-person instruction starting in the second semester or at any time in this school year? If yes, this needs to be clearly defined as the goal, and I will do whatever it takes to help the district achieve this goal. If no, then my daughters will miss their entire freshman and junior years, and as our parent, that is not acceptable. And I, as a family, we as a family.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Appreciate your comments.
My name is Melissa Wade. I live at 111 Hen Lane, Seaford, Virginia, 23696. Last Tuesday, ADA forums were due by educators if they were preparing on teaching remotely due to medical conditions for health and safety. Up till last Monday night, educators were under the impression that masks were mandatory and clear curtains or plexiglass could be placed, as this was stated all along in the back-to-school briefings. Some changes were recently made that are causes of concerns. Monday, I was made aware of a change in the fact that masks were no longer mandatory inside the classroom, but only in the hallways. Bus drivers were also told they could not enforce masks on buses, even though you're allowing up to 55 students per bus. This new information became a concern to those with medical conditions that were relying on the safe and effective YCSD procedures outlined by the CDC and only gave them a 24-hour window to secure their ADA paperwork. We were told also that these microfiber cloths, as teachers were asked to clean the classrooms in between classes. In my building, we were to go to the mailroom and pick up the cloth for in-between classroom cleaning. I'm assuming we don't reuse the cloth, so we have to get like four, I guess, or five. Let me see, I lost my place. Teachers are asked to clean the desks in between class changes with their bare hands as gloves are not supplied in the schools. So if I have a positive case in one of my classrooms, I will most likely, probability 100% that I would be exposed as I'm using my bare hands to clean the classroom desks with these cloths and the Q5 cleaning solution, which is a good cleaning solution, by the way. I also assume that I have to toss these somewhere in my classroom on the floor in between classes and then collect them at the end of the day and then dispose of them in the dirty disposable can in the mailroom. The coronavirus video that was mandatory at the beginning of the school year showed a gloved-wearing individual cleaning surfaces. Now, on the other hand, if I'm the one who's positive, I've just potentially exposed all my students whose desk I've had to personally touch while cleaning them. And I wanted to know if YCSD could commit to supplying gloves to all teachers. We only need one hand to clean the desks in between classes. Students are also eating in our classrooms. Do I get extra microfiber cloths to help clean when the students spill their lunch? I'm fortunate enough to have a sink in my classroom because I teach science, but the majority of teachers do not. The division has never supplied basic paper towels at my sink to aid in the drying hands, and I've had to rely on students to supply this basic necessity by giving them extra credit. Can YCSD commit to supplying all teachers, like an industrial roll of paper towels, so that during lunchtime, if a kid spills something, we can clean that up with the paper towels? Throughout, we've been told, all the items in the division will be put into place to ensure safety of teachers. Late last week, as secondary was preparing for students' return, we were then told we could not have plexiglass or curtains or barriers due to fire hazards, of which I understand, but to my knowledge, they are still hanging in your offices and the school board and in front of the school's offices. We were told late last week that we needed ADA forms in order to get these barrier protection that some teachers need, of which it was after the ADA deadline for these forms. Can YCSD commit to letting teachers still turn in these forms so that they can get the barriers in place as needed? And I'm out of time. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Paper towels, please.
All right, next, we're going to move into matters by board members, and we're going to start with Mr. Higginbotham. You're up.
Yes. Just have a few brief things that I would like to share. This past week, I was able to visit a couple of the elementary schools with Dr. Carroll and the principals. At Coventry Elementary School in Bethel Manor, walked us around and showed us some of the great things going on in the building, and it was really impressive to see so many groups of people working together to create a safe, happy, and fun environment for students between teachers, students, custodians, cafeteria workers, counselors, principals, and assistant principals. It was really nice to see. I don't mean to just sugarcoat that everything was just, you know, happy-go-lucky without any issues. There's so much work that goes into it in training the students for the correct way to go through their daily tasks and to see these young elementary school kids, you know, six feet apart in line in the hallways as they're having their breaks to go use the restroom or to move from one place to the other. You know, it was really impressive, but I do want to say I recognize the hard work that goes into it and the stress that can take place because of it. And I want to commend the students and the teachers and the parents and everyone who's come up with these mitigation strategies, and to see it in person, it is great to see. And the other thing was, when they were in the classroom, to see teachers being able to work with the kids that were in the classroom, and, you know, they had morning meetings, and some kids who were at home in the other cohort up on the screen, and the students being able to interact and the teachers being able to interact. I know it's a big task to have, you know, basically two parties going on at the same time, one in the room you're in and then one outside, to be able to manage that, and I saw that hard work going on, and it is good to see, and I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that they're doing. And I encourage other board members, if you're able to get into some buildings and see that going on, it is wonderful to see, and I know they appreciate seeing us in there with them for that. And I do want to say that I'm excited and looking forward to attending the GEAC meeting tomorrow for the Gifted Education Committee, and that's going to be a virtual meeting on Zoom, but I'm excited to be a part of that and be the school board representative for that and to bring some more information to you guys in the future about that. And I just want to say that I'm proud of all the work. And I just want to say that I'm proud of all the work that has been done and for all the discussions that's going on and working out how we can try to possibly get more people into the building, but only when it is safe and keeping, monitoring all of the different health metrics and operational metrics and things like that. But that's all I have right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Schaefer.
Well, thank you, Brett, for stealing some of my thunder.
Sorry.
But, no, it's great because I'm glad to hear that what's happening at Coventry is also happening at Waller Mill.
Bethel Manor, too.
I got the chance to go to Waller Mill and check out, actually saw kids coming out for recess, running around and having fun. Now, that was pretty neat. In the classrooms, it was great to see, at the reading table, there was individual plexiglass for each child and then one for the teacher also, that they could actually take down their mask because when you're reading, looking at the teacher reading and seeing how their mouth is set and how they form words is very important, and you can't do it through a mask. But I will tell you that the children were happy to be there. I was there for one of the morning meetings where they had the virtual class, half the class, and they had the class in front of them, and it was awesome to see the banter going back and forth between the two because they played games and everything else. So I think that while it's not an ideal situation, I think that our teachers are doing an awesome job at making it the best it can be. As you know, I'm married to an elementary school teacher, and I know how hard they're working. And I would say that this year not only has it been challenging, but it's been extra work as they learn how to do things and a lot of hours. I think it's going to pay off, though, with the kids growing and staying on grade level throughout the year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, absolutely. Just real quick, today I participated in the Day of Remembrance to honor the three TAB High students who lost their lives tragically just a little over a year ago and to mark the beginning of the York County School Division Safety Week. Students and parents signed safety pledges committing to safe driving and good decision-making. In addition, students and parents were invited to write inspirational messages with sidewalk chalk and walk three laps around the TAB High track to remember Connor, Logan, and Niall. According to Paul Rice, the TAB principal, the students did the planning and actual execution of the remembrance. It was extremely well done and greatly appreciated, you know, by family members and students as well as community members alike. So again, I wanted to make mention of that this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Geraltz.
Yes, I was lucky enough to be able to participate in the mock interviews with some York High School students last week as part of the Engaged in YCSD program. I signed up to do that before I became a school board member. I just think it's a really positive thing. Doing these interviews with these kids just gives you just a great feeling. These kids were honest, great conversations. They were funny. They had me laughing in these interviews. And so I'm signed up to do some for TAB High School this week. I encourage a lot of our community members and business leaders to sign up for the Engaged in program, doing mock interviews, Career Day, and all those things. It's just a really great way for you as the community to get involved, so I encourage that to help our kids with workforce readiness. I was a guest at the York Elementary School PTA meeting this month, and they asked me to come and explain what a school board member does and what we don't do. And that was the big theme. So it was really great to just talk about exactly what we do. I think there is some miscommunication or misunderstanding about the school board members in charge of everything and makes decisions about everything. So it was great to just clear that up. We had actually probably the largest participation in a PTA meeting that they'd had in a long time with parents signing on. Great questions, some of them I couldn't answer, and I was grateful that Ms. Denny was on there so she could chime in when I couldn't answer a question. It was just a great way to get involved and be out there and just be visible for the public to ask those questions. And one final thing, just thank you to all the teachers, our staff members, and everybody that's going above and beyond and doing everything they can to help our students be successful. I know there are frustrating times, and again, we just commend you all and our prayers go out to you every week because we're all going through it. So that's all I have.
Thank you. And thank you for mentioning that, the Engaged in, because that is a great program. I'm signed up for that as well. And just a wonderful program of how to get involved with our students and to help them along with preparing for life. So thank you for bringing that up. I was able to tour some schools on the 8th when we first had our pre-K through first grade go back our more vulnerable students, our more vulnerable populations went back to school. And I toured some of the schools down in the lower end, Seaford, Dare, I'm trying to think all of them we went to. We went to four or five schools, but saw the same things. So thank you for having the opportunity to be able to do that as well. I attended the WHRO meeting. We did that virtually this month online, and there was a lot of good information, good information about the new program they have for Black History that they have that they're going to be able to access through online and teaching that module online through WHRO. So it was a lot of good information at that meeting as well. So let's move on with the rest of our meeting, and we're going to start with our financial matters. And I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Schaefer because I believe you have financial matters this evening.
Thank you, Jimmy. This is for claims certified for payment in September of this year. Starting with instruction was $2,181,000, and the bulk of that went to New Horizons in the form of $1,815,000 for Governor's School, Career and Tech Ed, and Special Education. Then we had IT charges, which were $782,000. The bulk of that was $519,000 for device and warranty services for the one-to-one program. Payments for operation was $83,900, and it all went to Dominion for electricity for SEDEXO payments for food services totaled $56,000. And then construction and maintenance projects was $204,500, and that was mainly for the largest amounts were for the Grafton complex. Payments related to administration was $104,200, and that included the unemployment for the second quarter of $92,630. We also had transportation totaling $72,600 for three-passenger minivans to haul automotive, which was, I think, a pretty good deal. For September revenues, we had, it was up by more than $173,000 from September of last year. In previous years, the school system collected summer school money in September. That was not the case this year as it was done at the beginning, and that's why it was $173,000 more. State revenue for September was up by more than a million because of projected enrollment is higher in fiscal year '20. It's important to note that we are about 800 students less than was budgeted. However, the state will continue to fund school divisions on projected enrollment until the General Assembly convenes in January 2021. Sales tax was up about $220,000. In August, the state had revised their projected sales tax revenue downward for the year, which would have resulted in less revenue for the school division. However, in a special session of the General Assembly, they came through and the state provided supplemental funding to hold school divisions harmless on loss of sales tax revenue. For expenditures, instruction, transportation, and operations have decreased when compared to September 2019, which would be expected with schools, for the large part, being closed. For revenues and expenditures for significant changes to the food service budget, local food service revenue for September was down $256,000, but federal revenue is up by more than $280,000 because of the USDA's decision to cover the cost of all meals for fiscal '21. Food service expenditures for September '20 have increased $131,600 when compared to September of last year, again, because we provided school meals throughout the summer. Now, there is a consideration of approval of Resolution 20-43, a resolution authorizing specific procurement. Resolution 20-43 requires a board's approval, authorizing procurements of more than $50,000. The one item for consideration is $132,000 to Microsoft Core for emergency network services. Mr. Chairman, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Geraltz. Any questions? All right. Here are none. Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion is made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mrs. Garaltz. You may mount a vote, board members.
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And now, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. I'm going to go over the list briefly we have. First of all, it's approval of personnel actions, approval of donations in the amount of $3,013, and the approval of the updates to FY '21 Pay Plan for substitute compensation, which we went over and talked about at our work session, and approval of minutes of a special meeting on September 14th, 2020, and a regular meeting on September 28th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I move to approve consent calendar as listed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion is made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the consent calendar as listed. You may cast your vote. And Mr. Myatt? Thank you. The motion passed five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And our next action item is approval of proclamation for American Education Week, November 16th through 20th. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share comments on this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. The annual observance of American Education Week dates back to 1921. It was established for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. American Education Week is a reminder that all children deserve a high-quality education and that each and every employee of the school division, be they teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, or office staff, play an integral role in supporting and equipping students every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation for American Education Week?
I move to approve the proclamation for American Education Week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Myatt. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Geraltz. So Ms. Ford, let you pull the board, please.
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mrs. Garaltz to approve the proclamation for American Education Week. And you may cast your vote. Mr. Myatt? Okay. The motion has passed five to zero. Thank you.
And our next action item is the approval of Resolution 20-46, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, authorizing the superintendent to accept and expend $2,848,519 in federal funds. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Mr. Bowen if he'll please come to the podium. He's actually going to spend some time with you for the next three items, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, this resolution before you authorizes the superintendent to accept and expend the $2.8 million, which comes to us in three different forms. The first is $303,000 of CARES Act funds that were competitively applied for, and we were notified on October 2nd that we were awarded those funds. They were for nine programs. We applied for seven of those programs. One was a set aside, and we won six of those awards. The second is $2.295 million in coronavirus relief funds. We were notified October 9th that we were awarded these funds, and we have until December 30th to spend these funds. And the $250,000 is grants that we have applied for. We anticipate that we will receive those funds in January of '21. And I'll add, for the first two awards, the 303 and the 2.2 million, those are funds that, grant funds, that will be used to reimburse ourselves for expenditures that we've already incurred related to COVID-19.
And any other questions board members have on that?
You've already clarified it. I was going to say the funds have to be spent on coronavirus-related items.
Correct. And I will just say, also add, with the $2.2 million, this is the one that we have until December 30th to spend. We just received guidance last week on the use of those funds, so additional guidance. So the guidance is changing. We have one more webinar this week, and we hope to have that settled, exactly how that plan will play out. But for the majority of those funds, we'll be using technology expenditures related to the one-to-one program. We'll also be using expenditures from additional software programs that were purchased to complement the virtual instruction. And then our initial plan was also to include salaries and benefits of staff whose jobs were substantially changed as a result of implementing or developing, implementing, supporting the virtual instruction. So we're waiting for that final piece on the salaries and benefits, but I'm confident we have other areas if the salaries and benefits are not allowed.
So, Mr. Bowen, was it November 30th we had to spend the funds or December 30th?
It was originally November 30th because the state wanted some time
Gotcha.
...to assess if there were any funds left over that they could capture and then redistribute. But it was such a narrow timeframe because we needed to get this in front of our boards to approve.
That's good that they extended it.
And they extended it, yes.
That's great. Good to hear that. All right. And if there's no other questions, is there a motion to approve Resolution 20-46, authorizing the superintendent to accept and expend the $2.8 million in federal funds?
I move to approve Resolution 20-Tech-46, authorizing the superintendent to accept or expend about $2.8 million in federal funding.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Ford.
Yes, the motion is made by Mr. Myatt and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution 20-46. Board members, you can cast your vote. The motion has passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Our next item was approval of Resolution 20-47 for the County School Board of York, Virginia, authorizing the superintendent to transfer 3.2 million in general funds to our Health Insurance Reserve Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members. Mr. Bowen has spent a great deal of time over the last two work sessions sharing with you our concern related to our healthcare reserve fund, so he's now going to share some additional information.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you.
Members of the board, this is $3.2 million that we're asking to be transferred from our operating budget to the Health Insurance Reserve Fund to help shore up that fund. The $3.2 million is coming from the reimbursements of the $303,000 of CARES Act money, the $2.2 million of coronavirus relief funds. It also comes from the $250,000 that we anticipate receiving. However, we won't transfer that $250,000 until reimbursements have been made. But we also have the original CARES Act allocation of $583,000. We had set aside about $350,000 of those dollars to reimburse ourselves for salaries and benefits. So when we do that, when we make that reimbursement, we'll take the general funds that it freed up and transfer that to the Health Insurance Fund.
And it's my understanding our Health Insurance Fund has been depleting rapidly because of health insurance costs rising significantly.
That is correct. We're currently seeing claims outpace our current revenues.
I understand. All right. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 20-47 for the County School Board to authorize the superintendent to transfer 3.2 million in general funds to the Health Insurance Reserve Fund?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 20-47 to authorize the superintendent to transfer 3.2 million in general funds to the Health Insurance Reserve Fund.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Geraltz. And Ms. Ford.
Yes, a motion is made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mrs. Garaltz to approve Resolution 20-47. Board members, you may cast your vote, and the motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next, we have the approval of a motion to request the Board of Supervisors to appropriate the school division and the FY 2020 operating budget for the end-of-year fiscal funds, revision, carryover funds totaling $1.109.003.23, exclusive of impact aid receipts over the revenue budget line item for impact aid to the school division's Health Insurance Reserve Fund. So, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Again, Mr. Bowen is going to cover information on this item.
Gotcha.
So, members of the board, this is an action item that occurs every year. We usually wait towards the tail end of the audit or until the audit's complete. And the audit is just about complete. We're working on finalizing the report. We wait till that's done so we can identify what the actual balance is of our end-of-year funds from FY '20. So we asked the Board of Supervisors, well, we asked the school board to request that the Board of Supervisors reappropriate our end-of-year that the Board of Supervisors reappropriate our end-of-year fund balance back to the school division to be used for certain things. Typically, it goes back to CIP where we might use it for, we could use it for textbooks, we can use it for technology or use it for some of our cash projects. However, in this case, we are asking for the funds to be deposited into the Health Insurance Fund so that we can make sure that we shore up that fund throughout the remainder of the year.
All right. Any additional questions? Okay. So is there a motion to request the Board of Supervisors to appropriate the school division for the FY 2020 operating budget, end-of-year fiscal year revision, carryover funds as presented?
Sure. I move that we request the Board of Supervisors to appropriate the school division FY '20 operating budget, end-of-fiscal year revision, revision, carryover funds totaling 1.1 million.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion is made by Mrs. Garrels and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the motion and you may cast your votes. And the motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Thank you, Mr. Bowen, for all that information.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Policy discussions, we have none. For first readings, we have several. So we're going to start with our first reading of revision to policy EBCB, safety drills. Dr. Shandor, any additional comments?
Mr. Richardson, there are no changes since this policy was last reviewed.
All right.
We will come back to you in November for a second.
All right. Thank you. And I think, I don't believe there were changes to any of these, but we're going to go through them one by one just to make sure. So first reading of revision of policy JGAC, student-athlete concussion during extracurricular activities?
Correct. There have been no changes since this policy and we'll bring it back to you in November.
Thank you. First reading of revision of policy IAA, notification of learning objectives?
No changes. We'll bring it back to you in November.
Okay. First reading of revision of policy IKFD, alternative pathways to attaining standard units of credit?
Yep, no changes again. We'll bring it back to you in November.
Good to hear. And first reading of revision policy IKF, standards of learning, test and graduation requirements?
No changes. We'll bring it back to you in November.
Thank you. First reading of revision of policy IKFA, locally awarded verified credits?
No changes. We'll bring it back to you in November.
Thank you. That covers all those, all of the first readings and our policy second readings, action items, we have none. So now we're going to move into the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And again, good evening, board members. Want to share just a few highlights related to some of our few recent events. First, over the past several weeks, as many of you, you've indicated, you've had the opportunity and I've had the opportunity to visit schools and classrooms and observe creative ways of teaching and making student connections. I'm so proud of our teachers, the families and our students for showing tremendous flexibility and patience during this challenging time. Also, as we previously shared, we set tentative target dates for grades four and five and six and nine to begin a hybrid model. As a reminder, grades four and five are tentatively set to begin in-person classes on Thursday, November 5th. That's the first day of the second quarter, followed by grades six and nine on Monday, November 9th. Now, I need to stress this again as I did in the work session. These dates are still tentative as we have weekly meetings to review our health metrics and our operational integrity. Our next report from the Health Department will come this week. If that report or our staffing details impact our ability to safely bring students back to school, we will adjust these dates accordingly and we will certainly have discussions with the board by the end of this week. Next, YCSD teachers, administrators and staff are working hard to provide every student a high-quality education in a safe and supportive environment in a school year unlike any other. As we approach the end of the first nine weeks, YCSD is seeking family and staff feedback regarding the learning experience to date in the 2021 school year. Now, this will be our second survey. If you recall, we did survey staff members and families in July.
I thought we did.
So a family survey focusing on technology, teaching and learning, family support and engagement and decision-making is available now. It actually went out at 6:45, right before the meeting started, and that will be for families. And that will be available till Sunday, November 1st. Now, staff will receive a link to a separate Team YCSD survey by email later this week. We're hoping to get that out mid-week. Parent and student and staff experiences are important to us and the division will continue to seek feedback periodically to help us refine and improve our practices. On Wednesday, November 4th, parents will receive a notification to complete the federal Impact Aid survey cards. And if you've, you know, if you've watched our board meetings before or heard Mr. Bowen allude to what federal Impact Aid and how that impacts our school division as far as financially, you know that this is a big deal. So this is an annual survey that helps to determine the amount of federal Impact Aid funds the school division receives for our students whose parents and or guardians are connected to the federal government, whether they are in the armed forces, a civil servant or a civilian contractor working on federal property. YCSD receives about $8.7 million annually as a direct result of this survey. This is not a YCSD requirement. This is a federal requirement. These funds are critical to our budget as they represent 60% of the federal funds we do receive. In addition, these funds help to maximize the tax from the local government. In previous years, parents received a form to fill out each year. This year, the survey will be conducted online, excuse me, using RICOR. Most of our families are familiar with RICOR as they use this system to sign the student handbook and IT authorized use forms. So on November 4th, I ask all parents to please take a few minutes and complete this important survey. And this concludes the superintendent's remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So we'll be back at our next work session on November 9th at 5:00 PM. The meeting will be held at the school board office and social distancing measures will be implemented. That meeting will also be streamed live. And we have, now have several closed sessions that we're in need of and I need a board member to take, take us into our first closed session relating to prospective candidates for appointment to our Gifted Advisory Committee. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Sure. I move that the York County School Board convene in closed session for the consideration and discussion regarding prospective candidates for appointment to the Gifted Education Advisory Committee pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Garrels. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion is made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mrs. Garrels to go into closed session for the board. You may cast your votes. The motion passed five to zero. The board is now in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Everyone, have a great evening.